Open our meeting. On the air. Called the board at seven o'clock. And members to... There's Mike, hi Mike.
I'm Mike.
Where all meetings open, Mike. And the TV is on, so watch your mouth. You've been warned.
Duly noted.
I'm just looking at you guys. We've got the acceptance of our last meeting minutes. You all have had a chance to read them and... Someone make a motion? Make a motion to accept the... It says written. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
You're unanimous on that? And we have no vouchers? And we have no new plans? Plan endorsements, Steve?
Correct.
No other appointments?
Right down to special permit extension, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we do have this special permit extension. Request for property located at thirty-three dash thirty-five Hollis Street. This, they're asking for an extension on this permit that was accepted. The plan back on... Do you remember what's...
So it was originally approved in...
So they, I think, did you people... Gentlemen, you get to read the correspondence there? Do you want to read their letter or... I'll read their letter. This was to Mr. Steve Parker, our planner. I write this letter asking planning board members to consider our request to extend our special permit, SP two thousand seven dash eleven, for the property located again, thirty-three and thirty-five Hollis Street, for additional two years. Or sometime suitable to the board. Our family moved to South Carolina in twenty thirteen for better opportunities in building and real estate. We have been following the pebble market, waiting for a time to build this project out when the market has rebounded. I feel the market has improved and the time might be right to build on this, this out in the coming year. This small project would be an affordable option for buyers in the center of town, being close to town amenities and a good commuting location. It also offers another option for people who want less maintenance in a traditionally larger home and lot. We appreciate your consideration in the matter. Signed by Rich and...
Deborah.
Colangelo.
Colangelo.
Okay. Thank you. And that was their letter plus.
There's a plan there, someone's still refreshing that one.
Will you hear it with... So I think the only thing we really talked about last time was just that they, you know, they're gonna have to go back in front of Conservation because of the, there's Conservation issue on the back, but that's outside of us.
Right.
It's not much, I mean, it still falls within our regs, within that zone. So there's not really anything outside of that. Nothing's changed with regards to zoning.
No? I don't see any problem with Vic Center to him.
All right, well, with that, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept the request for extension for two years.
I have a question.
Oh.
Is there a limit?
We'll discuss it. One second, the motion.
Second.
And discussion? Mike, you had a question?
Is there, is there a limit on the number of extensions? This has now been, what, eight years? And nothing's been done?
I don't think so. I don't... You'd have to read our bylaws, but I don't remember.
Mr. Chairman's not?
Right.
No.
As long as they apply sixty days prior to its expiration.
And actually the first...
And the board approves it.
Yeah, and actually the first couple of extensions were tied to the economic downturn, which was basically a guaranteed extension, so.
Yeah, the state had already given a blanket. Grant of extensions because of the economy. Governor Patrick had done that.
And that's also why I brought up the point that nothing's changed with regards to zoning regs within that. And last time, the town engineer, I think, had actually looked at it to see if he had any issues or concerns with regards to the engineering end of it.
Yes, so nothing's changed from the regs, from my view.
But it's not automatic, it's something the board...
Right, right.
That's the discretion.
Okay, we have motion on full. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're unanimous. Okay, our next item will be OSRD.
Let's check.
You guys remember that?
Jack, what are you doing here for?
Thankfully, yes.
What's that?
Well, he wants us to...
Go and write it.
Oh, okay. Brother, I asked you for comments years ago about this.
Yeah, now we have a real interest.
There you go.
All right. Well, at our last meeting, I had agreed to contact Kayleen Jenkin, and I did not do that. Life has gotten in the way. What I did do was go through the comments that we had discussed from ConsCom and was going to make the adjustments as we had agreed. And I did not do that because I'm not sure if some of the comments that we were talking about addressing aren't already covered. If we go to the Conservation Commission's comments on section seventy-one twenty, where we spent some time discussing control over, or who would monitor, or who would, who would have possession of infrastructure that's allowed? Because we were talking about the issue of liability, right? So then, as I read down, there's a reference in our, in the OSRD proposal in seventy-one seventy-one, where it references, and the open space requirements in seventy-one seventy-one, the second, or, excuse me, the third paragraph that's in there, right above seventy-one seventy-two, says that subject to restrictive covenant pursuant to Article ninety-seven of the Articles of Amendment to the Constitution of the Commonwealth and MGL one eighty-four Sections twenty-six to thirty-three. Well, chapter one eighty-four Sections twenty-six to thirty-three are all about assigning liability, or not liability, but control to, for instance, a homeowners association. So I don't know if Mark, and this is where it'd be great to be able to talk to Mark, like, when, which comments is Paula referencing, or did she get, was this put in? Because I know Mark had made adjustments to the document. Because every time, it's in seventy-one seventy-five as well. Allowable and permitted, prohibited uses of open space, conservation restrictions shall set forth conservation, preservation, education, recreation, protection, or any combination of allowed uses, and to prohibited uses of the open space pursuant to Article ninety-seven and MGL one eighty-four Sections twenty-six to thirty-three. Which again, gives us the authority to say, well, if we want to allow for infrastructure to be counted towards open space, who's going to control that infrastructure? We could say it has to be part of a homeowners association. Now, I have MGL one eighty-four twenty-six to thirty-three on my computer. I brought with me.
I've read it before.
Yeah, and I fell asleep twice reading it because it's, you know, it's MGL. But it, and I'm not a lawyer, but it certainly seems to me that the concern about who's going to control and who's going to maintain the liability of infrastructure does not necessarily fall to automatically the town nor the Conservation Commission. So then I didn't know really why we'd be adding more language to cloud up what's already covered. True. Make it so wordy, you can get... But it's, it's referenced, it's...
Are you comfortable with that language?
Pardon?
You think they'll be comfortable with the language in general law?
The general law is, would override anything we write anyhow. If ours is less restrictive or less controlling, Mass. General Law takes, takes stance, so. I mean, that's, that was one of the things we were trying to do, is to reference specifics so that way, if the general law changes, it carries through as compared to writing our own comments and then having to rewrite this whole thing and bring it back through town meeting again because it was written specifically by us without cross-referencing. We have that in a lot of different places throughout our bylaws and, you know, we keep running into that same issue. Some of us, you know, anything from storm drain management, you know, where the state now has LID and the town doesn't, and there's no cross-reference to it. I mean, almost every single one of Ken's comments says that same thing, you know, and again, that's our own fault because we haven't fixed it and every time we try, we just keep, people don't understand that we need these simple references, but...
So I guess my point to the comments that were made regarding the conservation, each one of these, as I went back through the documents, I believe, at least from my eyes, it's covered.
Well, and again, it is the simplest question to say, all right, you know, based on that, does it, does it make sense to just say, all right, we think we're covered, send it to Ned? Are we incorrect, Ned? Are we not covered based on Mass. General Law? Right? And then that way, at least Ned's involved in the equation. He's going to get involved at some point in time anyhow.
He's already read through it.
Right. And this, but this at least gives him a specific question.
Okay.
This to this, are we covered with, with regards to this, or do we need to add or subtract from it? Is that something you can pass along that references those ConsComs cut?
I'd rather Rick do it. He's the one that's going to head this up. You're the other one that's...
Sure.
I feel more comfortable. I mean, you've been working this since two thousand thirteen.
No, no, this is, this got, I took a year away from the board, so this...
Well, this has been on the table since two thousand thirteen. And you've been running this. I feel more comfortable with continuing this.
Question for Ned.
Because I, I didn't do any of this review.
So I guess it's basically just seventy-one seventy-one and seventy-one seventy-five
Is the consultant still under contract?
We don't know.
We have no idea? You want to find out?
We're trying to contact Mark Archibald. We can't get an answer. I, I can play the voicemail for you that he left for me.
I don't need to hear that voicemail. Normally, you've hired a consultant who's been working on this. That's the person who would be involved.
Right.
I was involved since two thousand thirteen. I'd be the person forwarding that and looking at these numbers.
Right, but remember that he was, last we, our understanding was last, his last direction for Mark Andrews was to stop.
Again, we don't know who told him to lay low. He was told to lay low.
Yeah, I don't know if I can make that assertion.
Okay. I thought that was...
Whether it was his boss at Nashua River, so we don't know.
My mistake, okay. But he was told to stop.
He was told to lay low. Those were the words he used.
All right, well, lay low, where, where he hasn't done anything, equals stop today. Lay low in the business, there is no lay low. I can lay low from when my wife is yelling at me, but otherwise, anything else, I would assume it's a...
Stalk a hog?
Yeah.
Stalk a hog?
Lay low, hide in my office.
And the same goes with the comments that Kayleen had sent, that we talked about regarding seventy-one seventy-five. That section, I read that, again, with her concern, and I think that in seventy-one seventy-five, of the proposed bylaw, it, open space may be used as the land subject of restriction for the purpose of aggregate calculation under Title V. So Title V's addressed, along with, that's again, one, we're, section, chapter one eighty-four is, is referenced. So I'm not sure which version...
Can I, before you get into that, since we're not sure who asked Mark to lay low, I'm going to have you ask Mark Andrews, does he have any issue or concern with us contacting and getting Mark Archibald back on, back in here to work with us to finish this up?
Ask the town administrator?
Yep. Okay. So if we can get...
I don't mind even asking him.
No, but I want, I want it done through, through, through our group, through the planning administration.
Does he know why Mark Archibald is...
I don't care if he knows why, I just want to know if he has any issue with us calling Mark and saying, Mark, we want you back here. We've been told that from our end, there's no issue with you being here. Please, please show up.
Well, whatever, but I think, you know, I'll go in and talk to him and ask him, I mean, what's going on here? We've got some problems. You know, we need...
Right, but I just, I want it clean. I don't care if it's in a written request or a email request. I just want it done black and white. The he said, she said, between one person, the rest of it doesn't work. We've already run into that. Just, let's, let's get it in a paper format, a straight request. Can we bring him in to finish up what he was contracted to do? That's it. Unless someone has an issue with that. I mean, I, we've been told before, don't work with the he said, she says, don't go on verbals. I'm asking for something to be done the way we've been told we need to do it. And that's it.
Is our assumption that the synonymous donor is still funding this?
Well, I would imagine it was, it was probably, it was probably pre-funded for a set thing. And I know Mark's original contract was for his set thing. He's never talked about it needing additional money or anything else. So let's start with point A, and then if all of a sudden Mark says, well, I can't because I, there's no money left, all right, well, that's a different animal altogether.
And I think those things are, again, handed by the selectmen's office, and suddenly that's what I mean, we'll talk to Mr. Andrews and find out what he knows, and we've got a problem here.
Right. And that, again, let's just get it in writing and get the request rather than worrying about one person asking the question, and we're done.
Because as I say, a lot of that is he handles or is in charge of.
Right, yeah, no, under the charge of this, he's got specific tasks, and we have, we have a specific process we need to do. And again, as we've been reminded in the past, we need to follow the process, which is in a black and white written format, not in a verbal discussion, so.
So it's safe to assume at this point that this is not going...
Play, you say, Mr. Chairman?
You can, you can have any discussion you want with them, but I think, again, my request is to have, the request made in writing, to follow the process we've been told to do.
Yep. Got you.
Unless anybody has an issue with that.
No. Just think you're dead in the water. Why are we wasting our time with that?
And like, I think, go ahead, Rick. I think you were, I mean, I think, like you had mentioned, that I think Mark has already addressed a lot of these questions based on previous conversations from Conservation and Board of Health, but sorry, sorry to interrupt you.
No, 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 that's, and that's exactly my point. I mean, some of this, the, the last set of comments, have we received any other comment from ConsCom since our last meeting? Has there been any other correspondence?
So no one's, because they were going to have a meeting was, I think, part of their comment line, right?
Yeah, I did attend the meeting, and, you know, their concern was, as they stated, the change to us from a special permit to by right.
Right.
You know, making sure that we're compliant with all of the specific chapters that they addressed, and making sure that it's, that the density isn't going to increase and that we're not, or, you know, they're looking for just some information. And I'm not sure whether Mark ever gave them the revised ones.
Right, well, the, the most recent, and, and at least by the dates of the emails that were sent, and I appreciate Ken Kalanowski forwarding his comments that he had sent to Mark on November, dated November twenty-ninth. And that's about the last time we saw Mark in here. So I know what Ken was reviewing was the most updated of the documents. At least I, I'm guessing that it was. Wasn't in the room.
Is that the one, November seventh, is this his final review?
Right, but then shortly thereafter, Ken had sent an email of comments, a three-page...
Was this, was this the version of the document he was referencing?
Yep, and so that's why I think his best reflect more recent thing. And of course, his first concern is this issue of going by right or making it a special permit process. And then he has several other, you know, he mentions the vicection. So I don't know, we're going to go through that, or are we going to wait for hearing back as...
Whatever, whatever people want.
I think, right now, looks to me, we've got, seems to be some kind of a problem here because we're, you're taking on trying to do the work that we have, I thought the consultants do. And all of a sudden, we've lost him, and some of these concerns, without having him to help address them, be the go-between person, if you know what I'm trying to say. Well, again, I mean, if Paula... And if we don't get those, if I can just finish, all these other boards, departments on board with this, and we try to get it ready for, you know, that town meeting, we're wasting our time because I don't think it'll fly. Because if they bring up these concerns and all that, you're going to just get the general public, it's going to be edgy, and I, Rick, after being at town meetings that I've gone to and seeing any type of zoning change trying to be sold to this town, it is a hard... Oh, believe me, I, I don't disagree. Even a simple change. People come up and, well, how come? What for? And all these things to us are just simple, but they've not been there, and if you don't have something, and even professionals to help present this thing, that this is sort of a state thing, and if you don't have that, I think it just won't even fly. Oh, I, I know it's an uphill battle. I, I've been saying this since December. If we don't move on this to get it cleaned up before now, there's no way we're going to get it ready for town meeting. It may not be, again. You know, the night the woman that came from Wildlife and Fisheries, she was excellent. The woman who was part of the state team. Yeah, I know. But how do we get in touch with her? Do we get in touch with her through Mark? That was like Mark's contact. Right, and our communication with Mark has been shut off, so someone has pulled the plug. I guess we're going to go and try to find out what we can, what happened to him and what's going on. I, I mean, that's my idea, gentlemen.
Fine with that.
Thanks for your call.
No, you can thank Steve, it goes all the way back to Steve.
Yeah, that's right.
Blame you, but you're welcome. Can we blame Joe? The real little guy? Joe's going to get it next.
All right. Someday we might...
So if I can ask, you want to, want me to send an email still? You want something in writing?
Yes.
To the town administrator? And then you and I are also going to meet with the town administrator?
I mean, yeah, you know, if you can contact them, I might have a call too and say, hey, have you... I'd really like to know why, over two years of people's work and effort has been unplugged. Yeah, yeah. And trying to do things to better the town, and considerable effort and expertise has been put to bear, and I know we're at the twelfth hour right now, but we don't, we didn't need to be here, and we are. So I'd like to hear, was it a money issue? That we don't have money? And I understand that. No, I don't blame you. I, I mean, you're right. Was it a, was it a process issue? I think we're all here would like to know suspense. I think ask with the coroner office. Stop there, there's people in charge, so that's what we'll do.
Okay. Certainly do that.
Did you need to go down to the big meeting?
I do, but I don't, this is too interesting.
I don't want to hold you up from ripping special...
He's trying, he's trying to avoid us leaving here.
I'll be out here, will you?
Please, please let me go to a budget meeting.
It's in there, where you been? Well, they won't let me leave. That clock chairman guy, you know.
Right, all right, so basically, we have nothing else, so...
I don't see our agenda squares.
I'm going to jump right into that motion door germ.
Do you have anything? Jack, do you have any comments, anything you want to talk?
It looks to me like you're not going to be presenting this town meeting, having, you know, time.
Give you the history. We, I mean, this was going on before. I...
You're trying, you're trying to figure out what your design difference would be? Is that what you're trying to do, or figure how you're approaching?
Yeah, well, I just want to make sure, I'm in the process of designing, actually, we haven't really got into it yet. And I figured if something changes, and my understanding of zoning is, if a zoning article passes a town meeting, it's not as of that date, it's retroactive to when it was advertised. So that would mean, whenever you advertise this thing, we're into it.
You're, you're right.
And I'm designing for something else.
Right. You're, I mean, I think the fair thing to say is, you can always take a look at the draft if you haven't seen it.
Well, Rick sent it me.
Okay. With that, I think the biggest changes are really the percentage on open space that's mandatory, which is the starting part.
Right, and you have some slope things in there, of course, we're up on Pierce Road.
Yeah, oh, okay, you're looking at that one, yeah.
That's a sloopy, I'd say.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, we have some really direct issues with regard to then, you know, current regulation and what might be in the future. And it may, I haven't figured it out, it may be exactly the same, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's close. It, it is definitely more restrictive than it was.
Yeah.
There will be more area that will be conserved, especially within anything typically in pebble that has slopes, wetlands, things like that. So a lot of that, you, you have more areas that can be cut out of the equation with the new, with the new plan.
Yeah, but then it was, I saw by right, which is a, a big change.
Yeah.
The process was quite a bit different.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's some, some positive things too, I saw there, and I thought, whoa, it seems to me, you know, after you add things up, plus or minus, you may end up with pretty much the same thing, you know, that...
We, actually, Mark...
As far as lotting goes.
Yeah, Mark Archibald actually did a couple of scenarios where he was a consultant we were using, did a couple of scenarios, and actually worked backwards from some, he just took some random pieces of property as well as some existing developments and worked backwards, and it was within, usually within, you know, fifty percent, twenty percent on the lot, you know, the, it was, it was close. You had one or two lots, maybe, on a bigger development, but typically it was plus or minus either way.
There's nothing better than a real honest-to-goodness job that you're doing, because then all of a sudden, your mind starts thinking, well, hey, how about, what about this little loophole over here, you know?
Yeah.
Back there, you start thinking about different things. So as I'm going through this process, I'll be kind of thinking, well, if it was changed, this is what we do. If it wasn't changed, this is what we do. And, you know, we may dig up some things that might be of interest to you.
Well, that's, that's, that's how we were trying, that's how we have been trying to approach it, is, you know, for us, we want to get rid of all the, as you've probably read that open space thing twenty times now because it really makes no sense on the existing.
And you're, like we were just saying, to read the regulations, you know, you're falling asleep trying to read it, but all of a sudden, when you need to do something, it changes your interest level, and you can kind of stay awake a little longer.
Yeah.
So when, when were you hoping to start, or did you have a...
We've already started, and we're, we're in the process now of looking at some legal issues with the property and so forth, so we're a little bit of a limbo here, and we have to do some subservice testing in the spring. We can't do that for a few more weeks.
Right.
So we're kind of like at the preliminary design stage. We met with all the boards in town about a month ago to, you know, just chat about, actually Sue, Sue was there at the time.
Yeah.
And just to chat about it, and we got a lot of positive feedback from what we were talking about because we had some conceptualists that were called up and showed everybody. So we're, we're right there now. We haven't really dug into the real honest-to-goodness design yet, but we, we're planning to shortly. And if this doesn't go before town meeting, then that's, we're going with the existing regulation, and, you know, we just look at this new one kind of as a comparison. But if there was a chance that this would go to town meeting, then we'd have to kind of like stop and say, okay, should we wait, or should we proceed, you know? And it's not our call, really, it's our client.
So good luck.
I know. That's what makes this business fun.
All right, back to my motion.
Oh, did you make a motion?
I made a motion.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Is there anyone that's pulling papers for the upcoming election or anything on that? Because is it, aren't you up for reelection? Are you pulling, or, so you're not going to, so you're Donald, is that what?
Yeah.
So I comply for the opposition?
Yes, please.
Just, I don't know if you'd be interested in pulling papers for that.
I think the deadline for pulling papers is now.
It's Friday, oh, it's Friday.
Is this Friday?
This Friday?
Yeah, that's why, that's why I raised it, because I thought it was...
How come?
I'm having so much fun here. I think I need, as Rick put it before, I need a break.
I hear you.
Warrant articles are due by 16.
Like a 14 and more months, I think.
Yeah. Did you hear that, Jack? If we are to put this on the warrant, it's due in two weeks.
Yeah. I was on the planning board for one term, and, you know, I loved it, but the appearance of conflicts are always there because I'm in the business, you know? You can't, it's so hard to avoid it, you know, no matter how honest you want to be, so.
Yep.
There'll be a day.
Yeah, you almost need to be on another towns board, but the problem is, you can't when you're, when you don't live there.
Yeah, when you know so much about this town and you contribute so much.
Well, this town, how many years of engineering? At least 10 or 12, right?
Yeah.
I didn't want to give away your age, Jack, you know, I'm trying to make you feel young, you know?
Forty-five, I started young.
Started at 15?
There you go. All right, we do have a motion to adjourn meeting, is, do I have a second?
Wow, everyone likes saying here.
Okay, second, all right, all in favor to close our meeting?
Aye.
Yeah, guys, thanks a lot.
Our meeting's over.
Thank you.